All of God in heaven, we just thank you for tonight. We thank you for these men and women who are here on behalf of Concordia, who love Concordia, and we just pray that you help them make good decisions and proper decisions for the future of our community and our city. And I pray that you bless this time and help it be productive. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? Any motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
The move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve the agenda and further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address. Please speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, anyone online? No, all right. Moving on to proclamations, recognitions, presentations, items scheduled at a certain time, donate life proclamation.
I don't see Pam Campbell and Dave Barnes. They're supposed to be here, so they might be running late. If they could flip flops these around, that would be great.
Moving on to the Kansas Nebraska Heritage Area Partnership.
Hi, guys. I left a packet of a lot of information from multiple sources. I apologize in advance for all the reading, but I know that there's been some concern about the Kansas Nebraska Heritage Area Partnership. I wanted to do a little bit of history and why I believe it. Why I'm a board member, Susie is supporting it. The last page that I gave you will show some of the meetings that were held between different assets in our area. So that map that is floating around the internet on the first front page is the proposed area, but it's a very arbitrary map. And it came from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln student class from Kim Wilson, one of our board members, looking at the tourism in our area, the cultural heritage in our area, and how can we capitalize on it? How can we come together and kind of act like a cloud county tourism, put on a larger scale to keep people here who are our target market? How much are they willing to spend? Cultural heritage brings in six, the cultural heritage tourism, and that one tourist spends 60% more than any other tourist. How do you capitalize on that? And so they looked at the assets from Red Cloud, about 150 miles in a circle. Basically, it's a two-hour drive. Most persons really willing to drive within a day to then come back and stay at a hotel or choose a new hotel. And that's what that map is based on. It's possible that it will change based on the legislation that could come. And that is a legislative process. It's Congress who appoints a national heritage area. It's not the president that can just name one, say like the National Park. There's lots tied up in the idea that we are a national park system because the NPS would administer a national heritage area. That's just accounting. And you have to live up to what you're doing, the mission, just like I have to live up to the mission of the National Orphanage Complex with the IRS. We all have checks and balances. One of the biggest questions is, you know, is it a land grab? Is it going to take taxes away? In that case, I want to turn you to the second page in there after the first packet. This is the current map. If that was the case, the entire state of Tennessee would be a national park. And so it's not a land grab. Tennessee has been a park since the 90s. And I pulled up their percentages of tax rates for each county, and nothing is at zero, nothing is controlled. It's really quite a low state for tax rates. It's not going to raise them, it's not going to diminish them and get rid of them. Everybody operates the same way, and all participation is voluntary. We're not going to make somebody paint their barn red or take away their barbed wire. It's all about tourism and bringing people here to stay longer. And that's what we want, is that we're celebrating our national heritage that we have, that is so spectacular of settlement in Native Americans and the wildlife that we have and the farming. Agro-tourism is a part of it. We wouldn't want to take away agriculture since we believe in promoting it. And so this is our US press release to talk about what we are and what we aren't, what our aim is, why we would like national recognition, just like at the National Orphanage Complex. We could have operated without being on the National Historic Registry. But what it brings is a huge benefit. It gave us money. It made sure that we were doing things properly and preserving that building. But it offers up a little bit of guidance for us as well. And so we are very benefited by that National Historic Registry. And so to give you that, also an idea of what has happened since they came into effect in 1984 from Reagan, who named the first national heritage area in Illinois, the Illinois-Michigan Canal National Heritage Area. I did some digging into that area, I looked at that map. What are the existing national parks? There's a concern of flopping into a national park. All of those large national parks in that area were designated in 1930s and 1940s. There has been no park put in that place since they became a national heritage area. The true aim was to lessen the influence of national parks of actually, you know, designating land and controlling it, but being able to celebrate it the same way, but leaving it in local control. One of my favorites is the spending idea because we do get a match from the government. Doesn't mean that we can't spend more and then raise more money here, but we can also match that normally initially within the first 10 years, $30,000 a year. But that can be matched with any kind of model. And so that is grant opportunity, project opportunities. Say we do a passport program and you get to travel throughout the entire region. It not only affects people coming into our area, but the people within it. And it also means that sales tax goes up significantly. And bed tax, which I know may, you know, CBV is incredibly happy. This is one of my favorite pieces is when the ANSNHA actually talked in front of Congress and the Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. They were holding a hearing, and I marked it with a green tab about that they do not impact personal property rights. They did a huge, huge assessment, talking to people on both sides, and they could not find a single incident of property rights being infringed upon or taxes being affected. There's also the most recent, and this is 2021, of heritage areas as an outside, you know, assessment on national heritage areas. And so that was that initial, that initial piece of why we chose that area. So we have questions on why we should support it or why you're worried or anything like that.
Is the primary concern that you're running into the concern of loss of control, loss of land? That the government's going to come and take my land, raise my taxes?
Yes, and that seems to be led by three people. One, Kim Cade, who is a professor out of Colorado, and two, Ladies Mary Powell and Angela, or sorry, Angel Kushein, who are both from southeast Kansas. So I'm not sure why they're involving themselves in our area, which is fine. I would rather them raise concerns now. And the reason we weren't talking about it out in public and holding public meetings is a part of our feasibility study. And so there are already going to be actual meetings for the public for basically two years talking about it. But that concern, there's also the idea of tying it up into Biden's 30-30 plan, which was announced. And the fact that we started in 2016 was the first time we were visited by a student. It was actually at, I can track it because it was at a statue unveiling for the city park. A student came and talked to us and talked about our assets in our area and what Concordia could be for, and we're one of the top locations for the area. But yeah, they're confusing with the 30-30 plan, which obviously just came into effect within January, and are using our map to say that this is the place that he's going to somehow preserve in the Midwest, which it has nothing to do with it. You know, the first time I heard 30-30 was when they started breaking out. So, and the only maps I've seen for 30-30 are really just about what is preserved now and what percentage needs to be preserved within that. Susie, do you want to say one minute?
Well, yes, as a matter of fact. When I look at it, Kansas already has a national heritage area, the Freedoms Frontier, the Bleeding Kansas section on the East Coast of Kansas partnering with Missouri about Freedoms Frontier and all that incredible history. From our perspective, having been part of a national heritage area is just another tool to help us market and promote what we already have. It gives us some additional clout. We already know we're great, but, but, I mean, really, we do. But it is just one more tool that's advantageous. And I only got in on it at the very beginning when we had meetings at Red Cloud. And I'd say the plus of it right away was that southern Nebraska people were paying attention to what northern Kansas was doing and vice versa. And we learned a lot about the other areas. So it's, I think it's a win-win situation and can only be an incredible tool to help us take even bigger steps.
And I want to make clear that we're not asking for money. We're not asking for anything unless you want to sign a signature of a group like that you supported. That would be great. But if you don't right now, then we hope to earn that. But we're talking to all of our, you know, congressional, our legislative support, you know, and talking to people across the board and bringing more board members on so that we can fill out our board a little bit as well, so.
I was real proud of Kansas because honestly, we're way ahead of Nebraska.
We are.
I mean, as far as our heritage and promoting what we already have, they do too, but, but I think they were impressed with what we had already done.
Yeah, and I can say, I know that other museums, they're agreeing with them to be on the Dangji Hansen Foundation.
Yeah.
That we have to work from there.
Yeah.
And so I'm on the fundraising committee. And being able to utilize community foundations, we already have that set up to support arts and culture. And Nebraska's kind of like, oh, gosh, how do we get one of those? Which I'm not sure, we're just very fortunate. But we already have the funding options to push through a feasibility study, which is expensive process, but it makes sure that we're, according to all the guidelines that we have to be in accordance with, it's not adding new regulations. It's just a matter of what is your mission? How are you going to stick by it? What is your plan? Please explain. And so it's going to take at least 18 months to two years to do a feasibility study. And then, of course, it has to go through Congress, which is, it can take time. We don't know.
That's not a fast process. And from my perspective, I am so glad to see younger folk being very interested in making this happen. And it gives you a hope that there's, there is a big promise there.
Yeah, we have a lot of young people on our side of Kansas. We have Luke Mahan from Republic County, Kelly Larson down in Lincoln County, and also Kyle, who runs the Mitchell County Historic Society.
Peterson.
Peterson, thank you. Who's also, I would like to point out, he's a rancher. So he supports it. He owns property, he's not threatened by it. And so it's, I understand the confusion. I understand the concern for the 30-30, but I can't answer questions on it because we're not on it. So, yeah, I don't want to answer questions. It's very complicated, but yeah. Do you need anything other from me, any other maps? Any of the assets that we're, you know, looking at? I will say I mentioned Art Slaughter, and now he's helping me find the highest point in Cloud County. Because he thinks that that's important. And I'm very excited because I'm like, oh, that'd be a great sunset area if that farmer would let us be on their property because Susie already started the sunset area. So I was really excited to have him on my side. And he named some different assets that we have to go see the wind farm and all these different things. I'm like, oh, I never thought about that. That'd be really cool for people to come see. So there's so much in Cloud County. And when I entered a grant for the community foundation, I put all the assets that we could possibly have. And I was running out of space. It was out of control, and one of my top is Boston Harbor, of course. But we'll see what comes up. So, all right, any other questions?
At least you are aware of it, and it's an educational kind of thing. And that's, that's the way we're going to make it successful.
Yeah, please do call. Anybody who has questions, please call me. We're more than, you know, happy, or just walk in my office. Art does. Which is my best, my favorite. He brought me fruit today, I'm not happy, I'm not upset.
That's okay.
He's great, he's been helpful.
He's awesome.
Yeah, so please let me know, but thank you for letting us have time.
Thank you.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. If we see that Pam and Dave do arrive, we can maybe return to this section of the agenda.
Dave says he could be here in 30 minutes without work to move on and come back. Are we allowed to do that in our agenda?
We have. Technically, we've already adopted the agenda, but based on the fact it's just a proclamation, it's not an official business that would affect anything, I think.
It's for the whole month of April, we could do it next time. It doesn't matter to me.
That's true, we could.
And maybe best.
Why don't we do it that way?
So do we need to table it then?
No, I don't think, since that's just a proclamation, I don't think we necessarily need to table it. Let's just go ahead and.
There's no action.
Yeah, there's no action to be taken. I mean, you technically could do it tonight because it's no action. There's nothing binding, but it probably would be better since we've already adopted the agenda. It's really whatever.
I love that this is so far the biggest point of contention.
Yeah.
Mr. S, what would you like?
I have no opposition to placing this at a later section. We can certainly amend the agenda. It's not an action item. I don't want to get in trouble with the Meetings Act or anything like that. Whoever's watching YouTube land is going to grill us for this. This is going to come and go down, so be it.
Is there any real reason? We can't go ahead and read the proclamation.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Adopt it because it's a month of April. If we wait until the second meeting, most of the month is gone.
Let's do that. I like that idea.
Well, you can read it. You have to sign it.
Fair enough. That was quick work. All right, well, then we'll move on with proclamation for day of life. And maybe let Dave know that we'll take care of it and let him speak to it. Whereas organ donation is a selfless gift that has saved more than 39,000 lives across our country in the past year. And whereas Midwest Transplant Network, our local organ procurement organization serves all of Kansas and the western two-thirds of Missouri, where nearly 2,500 people await lifesaving transplants. And whereas the mission of Midwest Transplant Network is to save lives by honoring the gift of organ and tissue donation with dignity and compassion. And whereas the number of people on the organ transplant waiting list continues to far exceed the number of registered donors. And whereas 95% of our country's population supports organ donation, but only 60% are registered as donors. And whereas Cloud County Health Center encourages individuals to become aware of the need for organ donation and to register as an organ, eye, and tissue donor. Therefore, I, Chuck Lambert, Mayor of the City of Concordia, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Donate Life Month in Concordia, Kansas, to honor all those who have made the decision to donate life, to focus attention on the critical need for donation, and to encourage all Kansas residents to register as organ, eye, and tissue donors. For anybody who hasn't done it, it's a pretty easy process to sign up when you get your driver's license and put a sticker on your card. If I happen to go, somebody that can benefit from something, what's worth having here, but it's all yours. All right, moving on to the discussion agenda, year-end quarterly report.
Okay. Sorry that it took so long to present this. I have had it done, I just didn't have the summary in order. So basically, we ended the year really good. As you can see, 151% of budgeted revenue, which was a lot, a result of the grant money that we received during the year. If you take that out, we were at 102% of budgeted revenue. So that's just exactly where we would like to be. We usually underestimate revenue just a little bit so that we will hopefully reach it. The property taxes are 20% of our revenue, and we had 99.3% collected. That's normal comparable to last year. Sales tax make up 40% of our budget for revenue, and we exceeded our budget by 113,000. So we did better this year in sales tax. And I guess because of COVID and everybody staying home and shopping locally. Franchise fees, they were a little lower than normal. But again, as I explained, their timing of collections is a big part of it. Also, though, our AT&amp;T goes down every year. But they're, they're just a small amount, so that hasn't really affected us very much. Then, the highway connecting links, that's kind of a small amount, but that went up. They've changed how they are allocating that dollar amount, and that's going to stay that way. So we'll see that higher amount staying. Guess so, in total, on the revenue side, like I said there, we received $2,46,985 in grant money in 2020 for the airport and COVID relief. And so that had us really high in revenue, but then we also expended all that and would see the opposite hitting on the expense side. So if you take out on the expense side, the, the, all of that and any reimbursed expenses, we spent 90.2% of our budgeted expenses. And because of the additional revenue this year and less expenses, we did see an increase in our overall reserve of 180,391. So our reserve at the end of the year was $1,7,638 in the general fund. So that is very good. We are doing very well. As far as the other funds, we are also doing good in the water and sewer fund. We are at 931,000, which is a lot higher than previous years, but we did have allocated $200,000, $200,000 for the downtown alley improvement project that won't start until this year. So we will see that come out in this year, and that will lower the reserve a little bit. But otherwise, we're doing well, and the other funds were pretty much as we had expected. So I mean, you can look through all the numbers we probably already have. Do you have any other questions?
There's additional assessments, like what, what?
Light curb and gutter, or like the CPI building was paying one for us putting in. That one's done now. So really, it's just like mowing yard cleanup stuff that we take to the county and they pay us back. And we don't usually certify those until September. So it's like after the budget, if we had more than we were expecting. And then we'll see them over a span of 15 years from now. Like if we certify curb and gutter, it can go about, and if not, we'll get it from them with interest. Any other question?
Appreciate the way that you worked at these. There's a skill and a talent that I can add.
I'm still working on getting caught up from the other ones.
I believe that. Any other questions? Hearing none, moving on to the action agenda, minutes of the March 17th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes from the March 17th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2021 meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number six. It's been moved by Commissioner Bell, and second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to sports complex mower purchase.
Mayor of Michigan's request to purchase a new mower for the sport complex. Be replacing a 10-plus-year-old Hustler mower. We sent bids out to three places in town, only got one back that was sealed and that actually met the quoted specs. And that was from Creher Mower Electric. And for that Grasshopper 725 DT, let's recommend the purchase of mower from Creher Mower Electric.
So you did, Chris, actually ask all three managers? The way it read, I questioned them.
Yeah, yeah, was Bedrow, John Deere, and Creher Mower Electric.
I move to approve the Grasshopper 725 DT 72-inch mower to Creher Mower Electric for $15,011.10.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bell to approve the Grasshopper 725 DT 72-inch mower Creher Mower Electric for $15,011.10. Is there any further discussion?
Is this going to meet your needs then? I mean, I, we've had discussions about mowers in the past when we bought things. And it seemed like Hustler mowers were preferred at one point, as I recall. But, so I know, I understand that you didn't get a bid from them, but will this meet your needs?
Yeah, and this matches one that we have already out there. We've gone to a two-mower system out there for the big, big mowers. We still have a small mower for the on-field and infield part of it. Both the outsides and the outfields really need two mowers to keep up with everything.
Sure.
So this matches what we have. And this is a front-deck mounted, which Hustler doesn't make a front-deck mounted, a front-mounted one. It tucks in and out, especially around trees, the poles, the fenced-in areas, a lot better than the mid-deck ones when they're real happy with it. And it's a lot safer when you are changing blades as often as we are to lift the front of it and pop the blades off, sharpen them, that we have to do pretty much weekly. So we've been come along and chaining and jacking up the other ones to try to get them off. So this one's a lot more convenient, faster, and safer with the front deck.
There's a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to Ninth Street Mill and Overlay bids.
On Wednesday, March 31st, we took bids for the proposed overlay, Mill and Overlay job on Ninth Street from Lincoln to Matthew. We received two bids. Hall Brothers out of Marysville was $153,880 and planned to begin work on August 5th. APEC Kansas, Shears Division out of Salina, proposed to do the work for $164,949.38 and plan to begin the work sometime in July. We reviewed the bids. We found no math errors or anything, discrepancies. The engineer's estimate we added was actually 150. 153,920, so Hall Brothers was about less than $200 under that. We always add contingencies because when you're dealing with asphalt, you never know. All of a sudden, asphalt prices might shoot way up. So, so as a rule of thumb, we add 10%. They were under even that without the 10%. So it's our recommendation that the bid be awarded to Hall Brothers for $153,880. $880, can you read it?
I move to approve Hall Brothers for $153,880 to Mill and Overlay Ninth Street from Lincoln to Matthew.
Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve Hall Brothers, Inc. for $153,880 to Mill and Overlay Ninth Street from Lincoln to Matthew. Hearing further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Demolition grant agreement with Department of Commerce.
Mayor of Michigan, we know that we had, we received the CBVG grant from the Department of Commerce through HUD funds to demolish some targeted structures, structures that were voluntary coming into the program. We targeted them, they agreed to be a part of the program. We recently had approval of an agreement with North Central Regional Planning. It'll be our grant administrator. This agreement is with the Kansas Department of Commerce saying that we're authorized to be able to enter into the agreement and that we're going to comply with all the provisions, which we are on track for compliance with everything so far. The only condition that we had to satisfy in the conditions letter was that we attended some training, and Bruno and Stacy both attended that training back in February. Once this agreement is executed, has to be executed by April 25th. There's a little bit more work that North Central Regional Planning has to do. Once this agreement is executed, has to be executed by April twenty fifth, there's a little bit more work that North Central Regional Planning has to do. And then they'll be in contact with the property owners to let them know what the next process is and then we can start bidding out to the demolition contractors. In North Central Regional Planning, we'll, we'll coordinate that for us. I think we're targeting, we're going to purposefully wrong. We have about twelve properties that we're targeting for this, the demolition program.
Ten, three alternatives.
Okay, ten, three alternatives. And all the projects have to be completed by February twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty three. So we have plenty of time to get the work done. But we want to make sure that we're, we're doing everything that we can to follow all the procedures that we need to. So our next step is to ask you to approve the demolition grant agreement with the Department of Commerce.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Commerce for grant funds received for demolition of dangerous structures.
The move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the, authorize the mayor, sign the grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Commerce for grant funds received for demolition of dangerous structures. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes. Land sale to Concordia Golf and Wellness.
Okay, good, okay. We've been in some discussions lately with Concordia Golf and Wellness on their interest of some acquisition of a very small parcel of land that's kind of in the corner of the golf course. They want to put in a tee box there and that would expand the, I think they'd go from a par four to a par five. And it's basically ground that we have that I believe has a storm drain on it. Other than that, there's no use. We worked on this for a while simply because there was some historical things that went on. Country Club Drive actually was supposed to be a ninety degree. Road and, but it's now curved. So that piece of ground kind of. Became the city's, but it just was interesting. So thanks, thanks to Campbell and Johnson, we got a good and viable legal description. So what I would ask for, so what, well, what comes with that is so they'll purchase the property from us and then in exchange we will get a, a permanent easement. So that we can go and maintain all of that. Been in negotiations and speaking to the folks that run Concordia Golf and Wellness and everything is good to go. The, the person who needed to sign the contract is actually, lives out of town. So I sent it to him to sign and then never heard from him and then finally got ahold of him last night. He goes, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Everything's great. I was like, okay, good. So he's sending back the originals, but I do have a copy with his signature on it. And so he will be forty knows. So at this time, I would just ask for the approval of the sale of the property to Concordia Golf and Wellness and also to accept the easement grant to the city when we get it.
Address those as completely separate action.
Yes, please. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. I tried to talk as little as possible. Usually I'm up there running my mouth all the time, so.
I move to approve the sale of property to Concordia Golf Wellness.
Second.
It's moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the sale of property to Concordia Golf Wellness. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the acceptance of permanent utility easement.
I move to accept the permanent utility easement from Concordia Golf and Wellness.
Removed by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve, to accept the permanent utility easement from Concordia Golf and Wellness. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question.
Yes.
To clarify for sure, this agreement would go if somebody else bought it.
Yes, it's a permanent easement. Yes, so. My, you know, I think if somebody else bought it, obviously it's going to be all of that. Nobody's going to come in and buy the whole parcel of the tee box. But yes, that easement runs with that man. Unless one of them, unless both parties agreed not to, so we didn't need it anymore.
That's what I understood.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes. Moving on to supplemental agreement for wastewater treatment plant.
Mayor Commissioners, back in May of two thousand and nineteen, we signed the original agreement with PEC and they're the design engineers on wastewater treatment plant for phases one and this agreement in May was signed for phase two. We've had one other supplemental agreement that was changed after we decided to go ahead and proceed with the chemical reactor to go to the class A soil. In the supplemental agreement, and it's on page seventy eight of your packet, you can see that original contract amount was a hundred and forty nine thousand six hundred. That was for design. Then the supplemental for the additional design work due to that reactor was eighty five thousand five hundred. You've already approved those amounts. The supplemental number two is to solidify the estimate for deconstruction inspection and materials testing. This is onsite inspection daily that happens by a PEC professional that comes out and does that onsite as soon as that work starts. That's important to us because our staff is already busy elsewhere and if we had to also provide that onsite inspection. We may not have the level of expertise from what we're looking at and we certainly don't have the time to do that every day. So it's important to us to have somebody who's very focused and very familiar with that job that won't get called off for other interruptions and other emergencies. That allows our staff to go ahead and focus and continue to take care of the rest of the city while this project is, is happening. When we talked about that, the original contract back in May, there was an estimate for right close to this amount in, in that original agreement. So this should not be a surprise to you that, that we need to come back and, and take care of the supplemental agreement. So tonight we'd ask for your approval on that. We also have Sarah Unruh and Nicole Frank in the PEC available on Zoom to answer any questions that you might have that about the supplemental agreement. Jeremy's available to answer any questions as well.
Question, are we paying an hourly rate? Or are we just, the construction inspection, it says that it's on an hourly basis, so.
Yes, it's a.
Is it an estimate or?
An, an estimate based on the established hourly rate that was in the original contract and they're estimating, I believe for a forty hour week for two hundred and seventy nine calendar days. They're also estimating for their reimbursables. So every time they have to drive a truck up here, every time they have to stay in a hotel, but those are estimated based on, on that amount of time as well. Based on our experience with phase one, estimated conservatively, which was helpful.
And again, this is in line with, with the other, I mean, this isn't deviating from the work that we've approved.
Correct, yes, in same scope of work.
I move to approve the supplemental agreement with PEC for five hundred and twenty nine thousand five hundred and forty three dollars and forty one cents.
Mayor Commissioners, before you vote, I might clarify that the supplemental agreement said five hundred and twenty nine thousand. And I, I don't have my calculator handy. The supplemental agreement should only be for the two hundred and seventy one, one thirty seven ninety one for construction inspection. And the twenty three, three oh five fifty for materials testing. The remainder of that or the difference of that you've already approved. I just want to make sure that we, that we're authorizing.
The total amount would be five hundred and twenty nine thousand.
That, that, that would be the, the new contract amount.
Someone who's more mathematically gifted than I can do that, but it would look like two hundred and ninety four thousand four hundred and forty three dollars and forty one cents.
I like that in my motion.
Before you do, let me.
I got this in.
You did.
Two ninety four, four forty three, forty one.
Okay. Entertained a second, second. Okay, so we are moving to approve the supplemental agreement with PEC for the amount of two hundred and ninety four thousand four hundred and forty three dollars, forty one cents. Correct.
Correct. That, that would bring the total contract amount to five hundred and twenty nine thousand five forty three, forty one.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. For all those teachers who said I wouldn't have a calculator with me all the time. You're wrong. Moving on to the manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, just to see our pile of food to be donated to the resource center continues to grow each day and our food drive is, and still in effect through April twelfth. And then as, after that, we'll be able to count everything up. We also allowed our employees to donate cash and at that time cash will be converted into items and then taken over to the resource center. So we're pretty excited about the participation for that program. We have several legislative updates for you that happened in the last couple of weeks. First Senate Bill thirteen, which is the property tax transparency bill, was sent to the governor to, to sign. Or I'm sorry, was signed and approved by the governor last week. And the property tax transparency bill, what that does is it requires our taxing entities to publish notice if we're going to exceed our revenue neutral rate. So whatever amount of property tax revenue we receive for fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, if we're going to exceed that dollar amount by even a penny for fiscal year two thousand and twenty two. We have to send out a notice publication to all the taxpayers by mail and the county clerk is responsible for that. Payment for that mailing of notice will be split between all the taxing entities that are exceeding their revenue neutral rate. And then we have to hold an extra public hearing and at that point in time, people can express their joy or they can express their concerns. But you can still proceed with doing what you want to do. It's not a protest petition that requires to go to the vote. It's just an opportunity for people to, to share their concerns or share their, their excitement about it. It also changes the dates on when we have to submit that notice of whether we are exceeding the revenue neutral rate or not. It backs it up to earlier in July. The original bill had July fifteenth as a deadline with an amendment. That's now July twentieth. I, I think for us, that means that we're going to have to back up our budget study sessions to a little bit sooner in the summer than what we normally have them. I might correct the map, Amber, if I can back those up a little bit. I, I know they had significant, especially with the school districts, theirs fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, so that, that does not give them much time at all to, to figure out the remainder of their budget. It does mean that the normal hearings, hearing process would have to happen between August twentieth and September twentieth. Portions of this will go into effect for fiscal year two thousand and twenty two and portions will wait. Payment for those will happen by the state for the first couple of years and then we'll have to start thinking of the tab after that. So we'll have to work closely with the county clerk on, on things like that. Another bill that we worked on a lot with our, with our local representative and senator today was Senate Bill eighty seven, which is the redistribution of the countywide sales tax. And so it ended up not being discussed today. It got pulled from their discussion. But. What is being proposed that is if it passes, any future countywide sales tax, the county could choose whether or not to apportion that, a share to the cities within the, within that county. Right now, state statute outlines how those monies can be apportioned. So for Cloud County, we have a one set countywide sales tax. So right now by statute, the county has to take half of that revenue and distribute it to the county and the city based on assessed valuation and the other half is distributed based on population. Concordia receives approximately half a million dollars a year from that. Then on top of that, the city has another one percent sales tax that we receive about a million dollars. So we're thankful that it's only for future county sales taxes. However, the door's still open that if the county chooses to end their current countywide sales tax. They could try to reinstate it, voted it again, and then they could decide at that point in time whether or not they wanted to give us any or not. So again, they, we did really urge our senator representative to vote no on this and the reason for that is because it would result in the loss of, about, it could, could result in a loss of about a half million dollar general fund revenue to us. We also think that it is, it could really damage city and county relations because you're going to basically stoke a fire between the two. Everybody's fighting for the same limited revenue resources to do the work that we need to do to take care of our citizens. So it, it was really important, but it will likely be discussed later on this week, but today it was pulled from their agenda for discussion. They, they needed it and have the votes for that today. Senate Bill ninety has to do with rural housing incentive districts and this is another one that we're following pretty closely. Specifically Senate Bill ninety expands the program to allow for renovation of second floor buildings in downtown districts. And it also, which is where it impacts us, is that it allows this program to be available for cities with populations of less than sixty thousand with permission of the Secretary of Commerce. That's a category we fall into and as Kim and I have discussed, we can see a couple of opportunities that we can really benefit from that program. So we do intend to pursue that. Senate Bill two eighty six is with related to COVID nineteen claims. We, that won't impact us unless we choose to reinstate a local mask mandate after May thirty first. So what that is, is that if, if it passes, it would, would require counties and cities to set aside twenty five percent of the American Rescue Plan dollars that we received. To give back to businesses that were impacted by mask mandates or other restrictions in place for COVID. Counties have a little bit broader impact, but for cities, if we have a mask mandate in place after May thirty first of this year, then we would have to give money back to those businesses. There's a similar bill, Senate Bill one forty nine is a property tax relief for businesses with restrictions. And so that one initially was discussed that if there were restrictions going forward, then businesses could apply for property tax rebate that would impact all taxing districts. If they had restrictions relating to COVID from March of two thousand and twenty to present. There's also been discussion to make that bill retroactive. So going back to, to March two thousand and twenty. If, if the restrictions back then, offering rebates to all businesses impacted. So that could be business restrictions on gatherings, restrictions on hours, restrictions in the way of masks, anything. And for our counties that impacted everybody and that would be a significant blow to, significant reduction to our revenue if those rebates were given. And the way it was written, it would require all the rebate to come from the county. So. Revenue that was received by cities and school districts would not have to go back to counties to give the rebates. But I, I would believe that if I was a county commissioner, I would be, be asking for some help in that way because that would be detrimental to operations there. So we're watching that one closely as well. So those are your legislative updates right now. I did send you a couple of emails that had much more detailed description of those from the league. So do check your email for more information.
Any question? We have staff reports. Mayor Commissioner comments and reports.
Well, I'm going to thank Ron for getting the new flower pots out. He needs to prove whoever it was, Jeremy. I haven't seen him. I didn't notice, sorry. But I haven't been down town, so.
There are a few of them out of the corner here now.
Yeah. I'll look. I go out. Appreciate their help and all. Hopefully we'll get them planted now and. Spruce up the place a little.
Very nice.
I got complimented on our bulk field. It looks nice. Apparently there's been some tree trimming done out there and stuff, so. Great job. Couple of comments about, and then I got a couple of comments about schools not maybe being controlled and I just, I mean, you're just not seeing them. I don't know with that maybe. Kind of swayed them.
Just to speak to the downtown, the efforts, downtown beautification. Talked with somebody that commented about how, how beautiful the trees look this week. I don't know, I saw on Monday morning, there's been a little bit of wind since then. So I'm not sure what remains. But really talked about how appreciated the effort that we were putting into downtown and just really showed and their comment was, I guess I don't have to go to Washington to see the blossoms. I think this kind of Concordia. And so it's nice that people recognize that. Sometimes I think we, we don't see it because we see it all the time. So it's nice to have that kind of external validation that they do see that and it's nice. And I think when, when Amber was giving her report, looking at the, the sales tax revenue. That, that even without the grant, the COVID relief money, that as a community, we were maintained at, at over our budgeted revenue. I think really speaks to the power of what happens when we place our economic dollars locally and how important it is for us to shop locally. And that even in the midst of a shutdown and the pandemic, if we can support our community, if we just spend our dollars here. So I know that we say it often, but it really, I think, speaks to the value of investing in our community, investing in it as a city, investing in it as, as citizens, purchasers, consumers. So we can make it work if we just make it work. At this point, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I still move.
The move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes.